Are the athletes here?
Good.
Are the athletes here?
Yes, they're coming out.
Oh, they're asking.
Okay, do it now.
Good afternoon. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Thomas College District. Trustees present are Mr. David Oliveira, Board Member Ms. Dolly Zimmerman, Ms. Rosemary Breedlove, Dr. Roberto Robles, and Mr. Campirano are out of town, and we have Dr. Julia V. Garcia. We're gonna move away from the regular order of the agenda and move to item number five, which is a board briefing on the highlights of the athletic program. We're gonna ask that we have Dr. Silva introduce the speaker. This is a non-action item, of course.
Believe it or not.
I thought we left them in.
They're coming.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Garcia, it is indeed a pleasure for me to be here tonight. It feels like we've waited for a very long time to be at this point. What I want to do is simply, I'm hoping our Coach Huntley is here, because I wanted to introduce Coach Huntley. And what we'd like to do tonight is introduce to you our newest team, our newest sport, which is our soccer team, both men and women's soccer teams. They're doing a great job already. We're very proud of what they've already accomplished today. But having come from the rec center, I can't help but think about where we just left. And we've come from one big thing into another big, exciting venture. And I thank you for all of the support that you've given us over the years. When we started the rec center, it was really started as a joint venture. You know, who knew that, in fact, that's what was going to occur? When we went with students, it was Dr. Madan, myself, and Vince that took some students to look at different... So even the going now to start wondering about what could happen was as a joint venture. So, and then just, you know, somebody's looking out for us all the time. I honestly believe that, because then we came together and decided to grow this area as a joint venture. So it's been exciting to finally be at this point. I think Zelma and I have been anxious, anxiously waiting for it. So I thank you for all your support. Tonight, I am here to introduce Coach Huntley, our athletic director. Is Coach there?
He's on his way, so I'm not gonna wait for him.
Can we just go ahead and introduce the coach?
Yes. To begin with our men's team is our coach, Nick. Come on in, Nick. Come on in. Vince, go ahead and ask them to kind of file in, please. Nick?
Do you all join us on the side of the room here, if you would? Make room, scoot up a little bit more.
Come on in, guys. Come on up, go up the other side.
Yep, yeah.
Chairman Gonzalez, President Garcia, the rest of the board, thank you for having us here tonight. Two years ago, I came up here and introduced myself and got to know the board a little bit, and the excitement that was here on our campus, and a few months later, a lot of good things had happened with the NAI, with the Red River Athletic Conference, and then the announcement in the spring of 2006 to add men's and women's soccer. I know that on behalf of everyone here in this room and our next crew that's gonna come in, they're very thankful that you guys were in support of adding soccer for both the men's program and the women's program. We've started out fantastically and have done extremely well representing the university. And we just wanted to introduce Coach Dan Bellegaro and the rest of our team tonight, and make sure that you could put some faces with the people that you're hearing about in the paper, on the radio, on the web, all kinds of things. Dan?
Firstly, I'd just like to thank the board for allowing me to have the opportunity to work at the institution, and obviously Coach Huntley and his staff as well for giving me the opportunity. We're all excited to be here and delighted to represent the university, so I'd say thank you for that, and we hope we can bring a lot of success and be a good role model and represent the university well. So, thanks again. Thank you.
I'd just like to have our captain make one comment. He doesn't know that I'm gonna do this, but we talked in Coach Dan Bellegaro's office the other day after our Thursday home game, and he made a comment to be about the atmosphere, the support of our program. And if you would just repeat that to the board, tell them your thoughts on being here as a senior transfer coming in and what you found that night.
Hi, my name's Mark McCormick, I'm the captain. I spoke to Mr. Huntley, and I commented upon the crowd that we had the other night, and I told him that it was probably the best in college soccer, and I include NCAA programs in that. Been around college soccer for four years, and it's the best that I've been involved in, and I think that's down to the planning of the people here in the community. So, it was a joy to play, and it was good to represent, and it always, it makes you try that a little bit harder when you know you're being supported by the faculty and by the local community. So hopefully I can keep it up and do well, and as I say, it was good fun, so, thanks.
Could we ask that you please have them say their name and where they're from, please? Do you want us to take that much time tonight?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
We waited for you guys a long time.
Why don't you have them go right in front of the, on the microphone, if you don't mind, because it won't get on television if you're not.
Why don't we stop at, probably why don't we stop?
Just keep coming, just come on, just get that line moving, there you go.
Hi, my name's Pablo De Ollado, I'm from Los Angeles, Texas, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name's Gilberto Cortinas, I'm a sophomore, and I'm from Brownsville, Texas.
Hi, my name's Edgar Garcia, I'm a sophomore, and I'm from Brownsville, Texas.
Loud, so we can hear you.
My name's Dean McGregor, I'm from Glasgow, in Scotland, and I'm a senior.
My name's Ricky Rodriguez, I'm from San Bernito, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Enrique Rivera, I'm from Lopez High School, and I'm a sophomore.
Hello, my name is Fernando Mendoz, I'm from Granada, Spain, I'm a junior.
My name is Sarah Vow, I'm a freshman from New York.
Gabriel Escantol, freshman from Brownsville, Texas.
Hello, my name is Ruben Chupoli, and I'm from Mexico, I'm a freshman.
Rogelio Perez, from Brownsville, Texas, sophomore.
Christian Tierra, from Brownsville, I'm a freshman.
Juan Gambera, freshman from Brownsville, Texas.
I'm Arturo Puig, I'm an assistant coach here from Roswell.
Chris Miller, from Lincoln, England, and I'm a freshman.
Stuart Rogers, freshman from England.
Hello, my name is Bojan Maric, I come from Serbia, freshman.
David Percy, from Lincoln, England, I'm a junior.
Sebastian Gucci, from Canada, I'm a freshman.
Hello, I'm Zunia, from San Bernito, freshman.
Hello, my name is Mark Omalich, from Serbia, Belgrade, I'm a freshman.
Hello, I'm James McCarron, from Skegness, England, I'm a junior.
Antonio Vernaski, from England, I'm a freshman.
My name's Donovan Scott, from Skegness, England, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name's Brian Hardy, I'm a sophomore from Corby, England.
Hi, my name's Mike Hudson, from England, freshman.
Mark McCormick, Glasgow, Scotland, senior.
Andy Revan, he's been coached from Australia.
I got the first question. I wanna know, Coach, how did you assemble a team, such an international team? You've only been here a short while, that's tremendous, I guess. I mean, that's incredible.
You know, we were very fortunate to have so many good players from the area, which gave us a great base to start with. And when I first came in, I knew we had to get, you know, all the best local players from the whole of the Valley area, and, you know, unfortunately, we didn't really get up to McCarron and get the players from there, but I think we got all the best players from Brownsville and then. So I'm really grateful for that, having so many great players in the area. But then I brought five players from my previous school too, which was Virginia Monks, so having players who I already knew has been invaluable for us, and guys who have college experience as well, and then had a few contacts in the UK, and, you know, a friend of mine in Serbia too, so we were fortunate enough to have things kind of rolled into place. And, you know, as everyone knows, you can only be, you're only as good as your players, and I think that we recruited really well, and we've got a great bunch of guys here, not only athletically, but academically as well. So I think we've been very fortunate, you know, to have so many good players here, and, you know, I think in a couple of years, if we can all stay together, we can bring a lot of success here. But everything here revolves around the local players, to be honest. Without the local players, we could never succeed. And I think we have...
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it, man.
It is so exciting to see, you know, we always felt we've been in international school, but you all are, this is the picture that we are and that we want to be. And we thank you so much. We are so excited to have you. Welcome to South Texas, and this is so exciting for you all to be here. We wish you the best, and we are looking forward to some championships here, and we will support you in any way we can. Thank you so much. Good luck, you all. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
What we would like to do is just keep Dan and our captains here, and then we'll get a picture after our women's team comes in with their coach and their captains with the board. Thank you very much. Guys, you're excused. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you for the picture.
When's the next game? When's the next game?
Coach?
When's the next game?
This is awesome.
Friday where? Oh, it's in Dallas. When's the next home game?
We'll get you a...
Actually, it'd be a match.
Yes, we need a...
It'd be a match, right?
Yeah. Excuse me, you're gonna get one.
It's a cocksucker master game. As these guys leave, it'll give me another minute to just talk about the other things that have taken place in our athletic department over the past year. And I'm sure everybody's aware that Ronnie Zamora has come into our program and helped out greatly in our effort to get to the point where our consistency on our webpage, our ability to get information out to the local media, for them to be able to come and shoot video, have it on the news every night that we have games, have the video on the Brownsville Herald site now for the webpage, and then to get all the press that we are getting, 98% good, 2% bad, maybe. But we're developing, and, you know, good comes with bad. And I think that as we continue to develop and get the right people in our department, we're able to produce a lot more things. This is the first time we've ever had schedule cards that we've got out now. We've got a large poster that includes the fall schedule. We're gonna give out tonight our first little media guide for everybody up here that will include information on our men's and women's teams. It's still getting printed. So we're excited about everything that's going on. Our next group is our women's soccer team, coached by Nick Berikterovic and Christian Galucci. He is, Nick was our second hire, Dan came in a couple of weeks before Nick did. Yep. If you wanna pull him up, won't we stop right there? The rest, you can come over right in here. And Nick as well has done a fantastic job recruiting, getting people from all over the United States and internationally, and has produced a fantastic squad. To go over real quickly, our men's squad, as they left, they're sitting at 6-2-1 right now, 3-0 in the conference, leading the conference. Our women's team sits here in front of you right now at 7-3, at 3-0 in the conference and leading the conference. And so we're, everybody's proud of both these programs, and obviously the community is jumping behind it, and we hope to see more people out there as we have more home games in October, and we get back into the routine of being in school and being student athletes when we have home games now. I'll introduce Nick, and he'll have a word or two, and then we'll introduce all the girls.
Well, really quick, I'm really grateful to be here in front of everybody and to have the opportunity to run this program. I'm really proud of these student athletes that we brought into this room. I'm excited to coach them every day, and they truly are student athletes here, and I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot of them as we go. We had some success at the beginning, and we're just hoping to continue that success as we go through the season. Thanks.
And girls, we'll do the same thing we did with our men's team. We'll have you walk through. Each person will introduce themselves. You are on TV, and name, and rank, serial number, all those things, where you're from, and what class you are. And then you can stand right up in the background.
Start the line. Come on.
I'm Alicia Cassie, I'm from Scotland, I'm number eight, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Lauren DeGomez, I'm from Dario, Texas, I'm number five, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name's Olivia Gaetan, I'm from Iowa, and I am a sophomore, and I'm number 22.
Hi.
Mi nombre es Rita, y soy freshman, y soy de Roswell.
Hi, I'm Karina Sarinas, I'm from Brownsville, and I'm number 19, and I'm a freshman.
Amira Hernandez, I'm a freshman, from La Jolla, Texas, and 14.
Hi, I'm Carling, I'm from Canada, number three, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Brittany Mosley, I'm from Richmond, Virginia, I'm a sophomore, and I'm number seven.
Hi, I'm Jack Gundy, I'm the goalkeeper, number zero, from Los Angeles.
I'm Lauren Owens, I'm a junior from Lenoir, North Carolina, and number 12.
I'm Lena Kenya, I'm number 20 from Sweden, I'm a junior.
Hello, I'm Jessica Rara, I'm here from Brownsville, number 23.
My name's Arapia, I'm number 10, Mejord, from La Jolla.
I'm Lina Kuzunlia, from Brownsville, number 17, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Sammy Darmar, I'm number 11, from Hollingen, and I'm a sophomore.
Hello, my name's Giovanna, I'm number 13, and I'm a freshman from Brownsville.
Hi, I'm Elise Gonzalez, I'm from Brownsville, I'm a senior, and I'm number 16.
I'm Christine Wasing, 19, from Germany, and I'm number one.
Again, we're so proud of these women. On a side note, they've garnered all kinds of awards from our conference already, if you haven't seen it in the paper. Lena is the third-leading goal scorer in the nation right now with 13 goals. And she was, she has been awarded the Player of the Week three times out of four weeks. And Myra Saliis, she wasn't here, was she? She's in class. She got it this past week for scoring six goals, two in each of the three games we had last week. So we're extremely proud of them, and the defensive efforts that we've gotten also from the players and the awards. Do you have any other questions for Coach Nick?
No, let me just say, the board members, we talked about the men a moment ago, and the men are doing wonderfully, and we're very glad to have you. The women are also doing wonderfully. And I had, I got a chance to watch both teams this last Saturday, and you all are so good. I mean, you're very impressive. And please know how welcome you are on our campus, how proud we are to have women's soccer, finally, at UTB TSC, and how I'm very confident that you and your coaches will represent us well wherever you go. It's good to have you here, welcome.
And Nick, if we can have you and your captain stay with Dan and Mark, and we'll get a picture with the board.
We'll see you again, ladies.
One more assistant coach, please, we forgot to introduce.
Hi, Christian Galucci, Women's Assistant Coach. I'm originally from Toronto, Canada, and it's great working with Nick, and nice being here in Brownsville. Thank you.
Great, thank you for being here.
You want to step up for a picture?
Sure. I'm doing well. Where are we gonna go?
Is he passing us out? Mr. Chairman, I'd like your permission to introduce just a couple of more folks. Mr. Huntley, would you pass those out to the board members?
Okay.
And you don't mind? Yeah, thank you, sir.
Don't forget, please.
Thank you again for bringing your team. I wanted to just announce to you that we officially have scorpion tailgaters, and you need to go and be part of that at the games. They are staff members from admissions and from the registrar's office and from several other offices, and they bring their barbecue pits, and their coolers, and their children, and their chairs, and their tents, and they cheer the team. It is wonderful. So please join us at Morningside Park. We want to say the city of Brownsville very, very much for, and Skip Keller, who is the Director of their Parks Department, for their help in hosting our teams while we build our own soccer field. So it is, join us, please. I'd like to introduce Dr. Silva again. Dr. Silva, would you please come up to make another introduction?
Thank you. I would like to introduce Ms. Lori Brayden as our Director of our Rec Center. Lori? Lori graduated from the University of Florida with a bachelor's degree in commercial recreation, and she received her master's degree in Recreation Resource Management from North Carolina State University. She brings to us 18 years of experience in campus recreation. We are very fortunate to have her join us. Her most recent experience has been at Central Michigan, where she was Associate Director of Campus Recreation for eight years. Before that, she had been at Texas Tech University as the Associate Director of Facility Operations in Recreational Sports from 1996 to 99. And before that, she was at the University of Texas Health Science Center in Houston as a Coordinator of the Recreational Sports and Aquatic Programs from 91 to 96. We are really very fortunate to have Lori join us and to be a part of this exciting program in our development with our students. In the short time she's been here, she's already made some significant contributions. She's gonna know where every plug is and everything else is in that building. She's working very closely with Veronica and that committee, and of course with Dr. Mata and our faculty as we develop this joint program. Ms. Brayden?
Thank you, Dr. Silva, and Dr. Saliis, and Dr. Garcia. It is a privilege and extreme honor for me to have been selected as the First Director of Campus Recreation at UTB TSC. I look forward to working with our students and faculty and providing the finest campus recreation facility and department in the Valley. And in Texas, of course. You all can anticipate that we will aim for excellence in all we do in facility operations, program execution, and superior customer service. In 2002, the National Intramural Recreational Sports Association conducted a nationwide research project in conjunction with Curdowns Research Firm. The findings of this work, along with NERSA research partnerships with NASPA and CHIMA, in the last two years confirm and validate the need and value for institutions to build and maintain strong campus recreation programs. Campus recreation programs are not only fun. We contribute to improved health and success of campus community members. We provide improved health and, excuse me, we provide opportunities for service learning and, most importantly, co-curricular learning, which are valuable to achieving institutional missions and achieving institutional mission. I look forward to building a strong team, developing sustainable leadership, and taking campus recreation from good to great. I thank you for this opportunity. Please know that each day, I welcome each day with enthusiasm to serve our campus community, and it's great to be here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Silva. Congratulations on all the work that you've done, not only to make the rec center also possible, but in the recruitment that you and Dan have done, and in the recruitment of Lori Brayden. When we went to the U of H Rec Center to visit it, one of the things we were advised was that we better get someone on the job before the rec center was finished, so that they would...
He holds a Bachelor's in Business Administration with a specialization in Finance from UTB TSC, and he's currently pursuing his Master's Degree in Business Administration at UTB TSC. He's married, been married to Edith for four years, and believe it or not, he plays guitar in a rock band on the weekends. We're very pleased to have Albert as our first Director for Advancement Services.
I just wanna say thank you so much for having, you know, for having me, and thank you for, Dr. Ragland and everybody to giving me this opportunity to grow institutional advancement. Uh, you know, we're a small division at this time, but I think, you know, making the right choices and making, um, you know, the strategically, the, the different, um, areas that we need, I think we'll, we'll succeed in the, in the years to come. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to make just one comment, Albert's has been in the department when, he came in while I was on the Development Board, and such a help, and, and it's so nice that we're growing our own, uh, as, and, and have them step up to a, a new position, and we're proud to have you and expand and grow here, and, and congratulations, and we're so, so happy to have you, uh, stay with us and, and grow. Thank you, and help us grow. Thank you so much, Albert.
Thank you, Mrs. Brayden, we appreciate that sincerely. Um, Rosemary Mafinus, would you please, uh, come forward and introduce your member?
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garcia, trustees, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Michael Blanchard, our new campus attorney. Uh, Michael was born in Corpus Christi, but grew up right here in Brownsville. He attended Porter High School, and later attended UTB TSC. While a student at UTB TSC, Michael first studied music education and then government. Michael earned places on the Dean's List and the President's List several times during his time here. He also worked for a local law firm, sparking his interest in law. Michael later transferred to the University of Texas at Austin, where he earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree with a major in government and a minor in history. While a student at UT Austin, Michael worked at the Texas Bennett. After completing his undergraduate education, Michael transferred to the University of Houston Law Center. Michael's LSAT scores-
That's the best one in the world.
We thought you'd like that, Mr. Chairman.
[laughing]
Michael's LSAT scores placed him in the top fifteen percent of test takers nationwide. Upon completion of his first semester at the Law Center, Michael earned a Dean's Merit Scholarship. He also participated in mock trials, moot court, and negotiation competitions. During his final semester, Michael earned the top grade in his senior seminar for an article on legal ethics. Michael graduated from the Law Center, cum laude. After graduating, Michael worked in a well-regarded law firm, uh, with offices in downtown Houston. As an associate there, Michael worked on litigation cases and commercial disputes. He managed a docket of cases involving mass injuries and developed a database to track the parties, their injuries and settlements. Upon returning to Brownsville, Michael worked as an associate for Cowen and Boden, which later merged with the Aymon's Law Firm. There, Michael worked on cases involving catastrophic injury, employment dispute, and seven-figure commercial dispute. He tried cases to favorable verdict, argued motions in open court, and took numerous depositions, and mediated a number of cases. He also researched and prepared written motions, uh, and court briefs, once in the Texas Supreme Court, and so he's our, uh, research expert. Uh, while he had been successful in private practice, Michael was thrilled to learn that there was an employment opportunity here at UTB TSC. Michael has interests, um, outside of law, he plays against, uh, the bass guitar, another musician, he's a, for the rock band. He writes short stories and is a, uh, music aficionado. His wife Lily have, uh, Michael and his wife Lily have a five-year-old daughter and are expecting a son in November. Natalie, we hope, uh, the daughter, uh, is a future student at UTB TSC. His family spends time at the zoo, at the park, and in the bowling alley, and Michael is trying to instill in Natalie a love of football. So far, he hasn't been successful. Soccer, Michael, soccer. His family anxiously awaits their new arrival in November. Please join me in welcoming Michael to our UTB TSC family.
Thank you, Rosemary. Um, I just wanna say, I'm, can't express how delighted I am to be back here. It's a unique opportunity to come back to a place that, uh, I feel has given me a great deal, and if I can repay just a portion of that, it'll be a very successful relationship. So, thank you very much, um, when people ask me what I do, I say I have, uh, you know, the most sophisticated client imaginable that sees the broadest array of legal issues you can possibly imagine on a daily basis, and it's a, it's a real challenge, and that makes it a lot of fun. Uh, Rosemary has been wonderful in educating me about the, the organization, its history, and its needs, so thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Our last term, no, 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 two more. Dr. Charles Stammer, would you please, uh, come forward?
Of course, you know. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Garcia, we're delighted to, uh, have Dr. Michael Outshorn join us as the new Dean of the College of Science, Mathematics, and Technology. Dr. Outshorn has a PhD in Computer Science from the University of Adelaide, South Australia. After completing his doctorate, he joined the Faculty of Engineering, Computer, and Mathematical Sciences at the University of Adelaide, and later he served as an Associate Dean, uh, specializing in, in international, uh, activities. Dr. Outshorn joins us from Montana State University, where he has been serving, uh, as Head of the Department of Computer Science. Dr. Outshorn's record of leadership in higher education administration, his success in strengthening academic programs and recruiting international students, his experience in raising funds, and his outstanding service and scholarship will serve the college well. Uh, please, uh, help me welcome Dean Michael Outshorn, uh, who will be joined soon, uh, by his wife, Joanne, once, uh, they're able to, uh, make arrangements for their home in Montana. Michael Outshorn.
Thank you. If anyone needs a house in Montana, please talk to me. Yeah, thank you very much for having me here, I'm, I'm delighted to be here, and I'm looking forward very much working with my fellow Deans, working with the department chairs and faculty, et cetera, inside the college, helping the college grow and strengthen, uh, in particular focusing on its, uh, research activities and, and, and joint relationships we can have with other colleges and so forth within the, within the school, and hopefully we can take UTB TSC further into the future and, uh, strengthen it even further. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for being here. And now the final announcer and introducer is Dr. Jose Mafinus, our Provost.
And it is my sincere belief that if we keep bringing talented colleagues with distinguished accent, I will be able to pass.
No, no, no.
It is my pleasure to reintroduce and admire and respect a colleague in a new capacity. Their colleague is Mr. Benigno Reina. He will now be serving in an official capacity as a Special Assistant to the Provost for Federal Relations. Uh, as you know, uh, Mr. Reina, Ben, returned to his hometown of Brownsville and to UTB TSC straight from the Office of the Director of the U.S. Marshal Service in Washington, after serving for almost four years as their Director. He had been appointed to the Directorship by President George Bush in two thousand and one, and before leaving Washington, he was presented the Edmund J. Randolph Award by U.S. Attorney General Alberto Gonzalez. This is the highest award given by the U.S. Department of Justice for outstanding service. Mr. Reina was born and raised in Brownsville, he's a graduate of TSC, and an Honors Graduate of Pan American University at Brownsville. He's also a graduate of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, National Academy in Virginia. He served for twenty-five years with the Brownsville Police, and he was Chief of Police for six of those years. In nineteen ninety-seven, he was appointed to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Officer Standards and Education by then-Governor George W. Bush, and served as Presiding Officer of that Commission. He has received numerous awards and honors, among those is the TSC Distinguished Alumni Award, which we received in two thousand and two. Uh, Mr. Reina has an office in Cardinal South, across the hall from Dean Ethel Cantu's office, one door down from Dr. Wayne Moore, and two doors down from Dr. Bill Strong, but we, we know that he certainly has the experience to help keep order in that hallway. Our, our region faces, uh, important challenges, and we believe, like, uh, wiser cultures say, there are opportunities associated with challenges, and in particular in time of crisis. We have challenges in all kinds of areas, from border issues to international conflict to, uh, public safety, uh, environmental hazard, environmental issues, et cetera. There are also all kinds of, of opportunities, and we believe it is, in those opportunities in all areas to improve the standard of living to our region, and to particularly to help our students develop their, their potential, we, we cannot find a better partner than, than Mr. Reina, as we, as we try to make, uh, our country through its federal government, uh, try to be a good partner and be a fair, give us a, a new deal, a deal that is, to a region that traditionally has not been received, has not received a very fair one. Uh, Mr. Reina is a colleague who is universally respected, he's always the perfect gentleman, he's always ready to assist students, faculty, staff, administrator with the expertise, knowledge, and sub warfare. Our country, our state, our region, and university are proud of him. We are honored and delighted to serve side and side with, uh, Mr. Reina's for, uh, to serve our students, the university, the region, and you all. Let, help me, uh, welcome Mr. Reina back again.
Thank you, and Dr. Mafinus, uh, good evening, Dr. Garcia, Mr. Chairman, all members of the, the board. I'm delighted, uh, to serve in this expanded role at the University of Texas at Brownsville and Texas South Most College. Um, it is, uh, even a greater honor to have the opportunity to, uh, serve with such distinguished faculty and our award-winning students, and look forward to my expanded role, uh, in supporting the great mission of this great institution and the important work they like before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reina. Our first job that, uh, Mr. Reina has is to help us put together a federal agenda. Um, the, the federal government, um, as you know, supports many research initiatives, um, and, um, and we, we mean to become more strategic in how we approach the federal government for assistance, so it's in all of those areas that Dr. Mafinus mentioned, and specifically also in opening conduits to federal resources that can assist our professors, uh, our students, and our community. So, we thank you, Mr. Reina, for accepting this new and expanded position. Appreciate it. And that concludes the introduction.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Garcia, we're, the board will now convene and take a session.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you for being patient, it was a little bit long, uh, but we're back on, uh, regular session, and, uh, we need to go through some action items, because Mr. Oliva has to leave, he has some medical emergency at home, and so, uh, we move on to, uh, uh, item number two, which is the consideration and action of matters discussed in an executive session. We're gonna move first to the, um, contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown Villa Number One Unit, uh, excuse me, Unit Three Zero Zero Five, and I have to approve this contract, I'm wishing to approve this contract and resolution for the acquisition of this unit in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars.
I second it.
Moved by Ms. Brelo, seconded by Ms. Zimmerman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, non-motion carries. We next, uh, uh, consider the approval to purchase, uh, Fort Brown Villa Number Thirty Thirteen, uh, in the amount of forty-four thousand five hundred. Moved by Ms. Oliva, seconded by Ms. Brelo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none, motion carries. Uh, then, uh, the final real estate, uh, acquisition would be a motion to approve the Fort Brown Villa Unit Four E, and this is a, uh, in the Villa Two, uh, section for the, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. May I have a motion? Motion has been, uh, made by Ms. Oliva, seconded by Ms. Brelo, all in favor? All opposed, none, motion carries. Uh, then, uh, the final real estate acquisition would be a motion to approve the Fort Brown Villa Unit Four E, and this is a, uh, in the Villa Two, uh, section for the, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. May I have a motion? Motion has been, uh, made by Ms. Oliva, seconded by Ms. Brelo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none, motion carries. Uh, we now move, uh, to item number six, which is, uh, the second reading of the Board Policy Six B, Considering Tuition. Uh, Dr. David Pearson will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. In order to amend TSC policy, two readings of a proposed new policy are required. The first reading of the amended tuition policy was presented for the board's consideration at the June twenty-first board meeting in Port Isabel. Tonight, we present the second reading of that policy. I'd point out to the board, there are no substantial changes from the first reading, only the inclusion of the effective date for the policy change, which will be at the beginning of the spring semester two thousand and eight. The proposed policy amendment sets the TSC tuition at one hundred percent of the UTB resident tuition rate. As the board may recall, the recommendation was derived from discussions during the board's retreats in February, and in June, and during the recent board workshop just a couple of weeks ago. In addition, members of the Academic Affairs Partnership Committee and University Council participated in the development of an alternative use for the funds involved, and I'll be presenting that as an alter, that alternative as the next agenda item. I'll have, I'll answer any questions if the board wishes, but, Mr. Chairman, the amendment requires a motion.
Hey, may I have a motion, please? Motion has been made by Ms. Oliva, seconded by Ms. Brelo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none, motion carries. Uh, then, we move to item number seven, which is, uh, a resolution for the establishment of the TSC Trustee Scholarship, and Dr. Pearson will present this, uh, this item.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Before the board this evening is a resolution establishing the TSC Trustee Scholarship for in-district students at UTB TSC. The scholarship directs dollars previously used for the TSC tuition subsidy in a way that is consistent with furthering our students' academic performance and academic success. The scholarship provides tuition assistance to in-district students taking lower-division courses. It also provides tuition assistance to in-district students taking upper-division courses, provided they're taking at least fifteen semester credit hours. Mr. Chairman, the resolution is to be read by you and is included in your binders.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson. If I may, um, resolution for the establishment of the TSC Trustee Scholarship, whereas the Texas South Most College District is committed to offering financial support to in-district students to ensure access to higher education and to enhance student success, and whereas the University of Texas at Brownsville and Texas South Most College partnership implemented criteria for satisfactory academic progress, a minimum of cumulative two-point-oh grade point average, and a minimum cumulative seven-
All in favor to approve the reading of the policy as presented?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Let me back up to the approval of the minutes of August 30th and September 11. I asked you to look at those minutes of the previous meetings, and I want to entertain a motion to. Motion's been made by Mr. Oliva.
Both said?
Both said.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Briedle. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Then we move to item number seven, which is a resolution for the establishment of the TSC Trustee Scholarship. And Dr. Pearson will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Before the board this evening is a resolution establishing the TSC Trustee Scholarship for in-district students at UTB TSC. The scholarship directs dollars previously used for the TSC tuition subsidy in a way that is consistent with furthering our students' academic performance and academic success. The scholarship provides tuition assistance to in-district students taking lower-division courses. It also provides tuition assistance to in-district students taking upper-division courses, provided they're taking at least 15 semester credit hours. Mr. Chairman, the resolution is to be read by you and is included in your binders.
Thank you. If I may, resolution for the establishment of the TSC Trustee Scholarship, whereas the Texas Southmost College District is committed to offering financial support to in-district students to ensure access to higher education and to enhance student success, and whereas the University of Texas at Brownsville and Texas Southmost College Partnership implemented criteria for satisfactory academic progress, a minimum of cumulative 2.0 grade-point average and a minimum cumulative 70% course completion rate, and whereas the Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees wishes to provide a scholarship to all in-district students taking lower-division courses who are able to register under satisfactory academic progress criteria, and whereas Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees wishes to provide a scholarship during spring or fall semesters to all in-district students who are able to register under satisfactory academic progress criteria, who are enrolled in upper-division courses and are taking 15 or more credit hours during the semester, and whereas the amount of the scholarship shall initially be awarded at a rate of $19 per semester credit hour, up to a maximum of 15 semester credit hours, and whereas the amount of the scholarship shall be calibrated each year by the Board of Trustees during the annual budget cycle to ensure sustainability and access by all qualified in-district students. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Texas Southmost College District Trustee Scholarship become effective during the spring 2008 semester, and that the Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees directs the Vice President for Partnership Affairs to operationalize the Texas Southmost College District Trustee Scholarship in cooperation with the Vice President for Business Affairs. A witness here whereof, I have here on to set my hand on this 26th day of September the year 2007, sign Chester Gonzalez, Chairman Board Trustees, Eduardo Campirano, Secretary of Board Trustees. A motion's been made to approve the, to adopt the resolution as presented by Mrs. Zimmerman, second by Mrs. Briedle. Any other discussions on this item? No further discussion, then may I have a motion, may I have a vote, please?
Aye.
All approved. Any opposition? No, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the board for what you've just done. It is extraordinary. It's very generous on your part to extend this opportunity to the students of this district. We will be responsible with this commitment, and we hope it will create an ambient for greater academic success for our students. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
The next action item, David.
Need a couple of words.
Number seven? Where are we? Number eight?
Mr. Gonzalez, there are no more action items.
While David's still here, I want to now go back to item number two in part, which is the evaluation of Dr. Garcia as the UTB TSC President. This has been a very, very busy year for this institution, and we've had many, many accomplishments. Dr. Garcia and her leadership has been excellent, and this board has a complete confidence in her leadership on our campus. I would be remiss to say that Dr. Garcia is as good as her staff, and faculty, and students. And it is because of her leadership and the leadership that is bestowed upon the staff and faculty, and that we have created an institution that we all can be proud of. And because of her leadership, this board is very, very happy with the outcome that we've had throughout the year. Dr. Garcia has a tough job. We've had many issues with funding, with academic programs, with political legislative issues, but she has been there for the institution. The mission continues on her leadership. We've had many, many positive things that have enabled us to transition from being a sleepy-hollow university to what it is today. You saw the, Mr. Henley's soccer team come before us today. We would have never imagined that we would have a program like that on our campus, international students on our campus. And while that is just one of the many examples of her leadership, it's something that she has worked at very hard and passed on that leadership to you, that has allowed the institution to grow at the rate that it has grown. We've had construction programs that we saw today with the topping of the rec center. We have the first doctoral free-studying program on our campus, which is a major clue for us. We've had the Math and Science Academy begin this fall, whereby we literally give students a high school diploma and a 60 hours of college credit at no expense. We would have never imagined that ever happening on our campus. We've had to work on accreditation, you know, for the institution. The SAP program, which has got to be one of the most important, important milestones that have been passed by her leadership, that will impact on the quality of the students on our campus. So this board is very, very happy, and very content, and very thankful for the leadership that Dr. Garcia has provided. And I say that, and at the same time say that, thank you, faculty. Thank you, staff. Thank you for allowing her leadership policies to be implemented and making this institution what it is today. I truly believe that this institution is just starting to get better. And there's something in the atmosphere that tells me that things are happening here, and they're not happening by accident. They're happening by hard work, by implementing proper policies, by collaborative efforts among many institutions, including the local schools. And this is attributed to Dr. Garcia's leadership, and we thank her. We have a complete vote of confidence in her leadership abilities, and we can only wait what she brings to this campus next year. So on behalf of the Board Trustees, Dr. Garcia. Aye. And I, out of my heart, I thank you for the things that you are placing today that are going to impact generations of students in the future.
Well, if I may, I just wanted to thank you for those words, and to thank everybody else who makes this happen, because as I mentioned to the chairman, I understand that I take credit for a lot of work that I don't do, and I sincerely appreciate the honor it is to be president at this wonderful university, and to work with such an honest and committed board, which has best.
Where are we now? We're hopping around, so I apologize for that.
Chair, if there are no more action items, I'd like to.
Is that, one more? Number four is, okay, but that's not an action item.
Correct.
David?
Thank you.
Item number four, speakers are agenda items and hold a discussion. Do we have any speakers? No? Thank you. Okay, we do?
No.
So item number eight is the appointment of committee delegates. This is the appointment of trustees to ad hoc committee to review partnership agreements. And at this time, I would like to appoint Rosemary Briedle, Eduardo Campirano, and myself to this committee. The task of this committee will be to review the partnership agreements with UTB TSC, and recommend updates or amendments to the board if necessary. Item number nine is now the Physical Facilities Subcommittee Report. Ms. Briedle will present that to the board.
The Physical Facilities Subcommittee met earlier this afternoon. The committee discussed the master plans for the athletic zone and student housing. Now, when did we think we were going to have an athletic zone? It is exciting. Both of these master plans were developed to complement the recently updated facilities' master plan. The need to assess the best use of the land was prompted by a recent land acquisition and student growth. The acquisition of the Los Tomates Banco property was realized at an opportune time, as it allowed us to envision the growth of the athletic program. In addition, as a result of the planning process for the housing zone, new design guidelines emerged that complement our historic campus and downtown Brownsville. The planning group from Barodis and Associates was engaged to lead the campus through the strategic planning process. I would now like to introduce Chris Wright from Barodis and Associates to present a quick overview of both master plans. And this is very exciting, you all. We want to do it all right away, I know. Everybody does. This is lots of things to do.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I know.
Well, thank you so much for asking us to come down and to be a part of this. I mean, what a very exciting time to be here at UTB TSC, and of course, seeing all the athletes that came marching through here today, how exciting that was. And of course, this presentation will talk about the future of athletics as it relates to those two groups of folks that came in today. And I just wanted to say, Chairman, to reiterate your vote of confidence for President Garcia, I've been to a lot of universities across this country, and I could tell you that this university is on the cusp of great things, and I think a lot of it has to do with the president, Veronica, and everybody holding the feet of these architects and contractors to build beautiful buildings and to create great landscape. And that's seen throughout the campus, as one walks around, and I think it's an important thing to continue to do, is to set the goal high, and you've done that. And now you can go around and look at your campus and say, we're going to continue to build in this manner throughout the entire campus, and people will fall in love with this place. I think the other thing that really is a huge turning point is the addition of student housing to this campus. It's really going to change the student life for everybody here on campus. And so both these projects are both kind of moving in that direction, and what a great time to be a part of all that, and we appreciate you inviting us to help you do master planning for those projects. So tonight, we're going to talk very quickly, because I know it's running late, but a little bit about the planning that we've been looking at for Los Tomates Banco, just a review of kind of why we do the planning, some of the planning principles that we set forth, and how it might be phased. We know that there's immediate needs for soccer, and what the long-range plan is. And then just a quick overview, because a lot of you have already seen the Fort Brown Village housing, but we thought we'd show that to you real quickly, too. Oops, wrong direction, sorry. So some of the reasons for doing this planning effort at Los Tomates was really, as we started to look at athletics, is that you really have very little land left available for athletics to expand on campus. I mean, our initial reaction was, well, that's kind of far away. Can we not really fit a soccer field on this campus somewhere? You know what? You really can't. There's no place to do it that's big enough. And some of the other parts of that is that it really provides athletics a good convenient spot to expand and to grow that's really accessible from the expressway. So as one starts to think about getting cars in and out of this area, it's a great location for that. It also alleviates the need to try to fit that soccer field right away on the campus. It's a very difficult thing to do. So we were asked to master plan the 80 acres at Los Tomates in phases. And after meeting with your athletic director, Dan, and it was great seeing the teams come in here, Dan, what a great idea. It really is his goal and dream to be the best in the NIA division in the nation. And originally, I put region up there, and he goes, no, in the nation. We want to be in the nation. And so to do that, you really are going to need to build initially, and these are kind of the wish list in one, two, three, and four, the soccer fields first, offices and the gym for volleyball, softball fields, two softball fields, one competition, one practice, and then the competitive baseball field. And some of the other potential ideas that were thrown out in that meeting were the notion of an indoor event center that would be a great opportunity for, obviously, the competition events, but also larger campus events such as graduation, et cetera, public outreach programs, which, if you think about that, the Los Tomates, it really is surrounded by a neighborhood. And so that public outreach programs can be concerts and guest speakers, et cetera. And then finally, this idea, and it just really hit home today, as half the soccer team on both sides were international students. What a great, you know, opportunity, if you could ever imagine an international-sized soccer field out there, that you would draw interest from the nation, but also outside of our own nation, which could be very exciting. So we always say that planning is a very important thing to do, because in the end, we don't want to design a barn with a door in it, and then go out and buy an elephant that's not going to fit through it and have to tear the barn down. So in order to keep from doing that, we'd like to establish a broader vision for the land that we currently own, and let's be smart about how we use it. Let's think outside the box. Let's think creatively. Let's think about the future. And with the students of today, it's interesting, if you think about the students of two years ago even, they had a PDA and a laptop and, you know, separate radio to listen to and CD, but now, you get, right, an iPod, right? You can fit it all into one thing, and so it's, technology is continuing to change. And the plan should be implementable. We don't like the idea of doing master plans that end up sitting on a shelf and never being followed and used, and to do that, we need to make sure that the money we spend today, even if it's just simply planting 30 trees that somebody donates, you want to plant those in a location that's going to accentuate that passeo at some point, or to align where our future building might go. And so every little, every little dollar you spend, you want to make sure it's all in the right direction with a bigger vision. And so these three planning principles were written the other day, thinking about all the issues we've been dealing with, that talks about how we really need to be looking at building a world-class athletic complex that nurtures the students, both personally and physically, and not only the students, but the greater community of Brownsville and the Valley, I think, that we need to create a campus community for the students to live, socialize, study, experience athletic events together, and of course, eat together. Building and supporting student life is very important, and could be done as a part of this project. To test the maximum capacity of the land, and that's the push to limit. A lot of folks, you show up on campus, and they tell you, you know, we have no more room to build. I've done that on other campuses, and we end up doubling the size of their campus in the end, because they're not thinking about how compact a campus could be if you just think about parking in a different way, and a lot of times, it revolves around that, as if you can shift the parking. It also means that in the end, you probably have to build parking garages so that it gets stacked, all the while preserving the pedestrian experience, especially as it relates to the resaca on this particular site. So in the plan, just to give you an overview, for those of you that may or may not know where Los Tomates is located, the highway is over here, the main campus is here, and we've tipped into the aerial photograph, the master plan, so you can see the darker buildings are existing and the lighter, oh, it's the other way around, sorry. The lighter buildings are existing, the darker ones are proposed new. And here, we tipped in the master plan for the peninsula, which we'll review in a few minutes, and the road that connects over and eventually becomes a loop. And Los Tomates is this piece here, and basically is 80 acres that's wrapped all the way around by this resaca. So we came back in July with a quick sketch that looked at this, and it was interesting through the end of the, through the course of that meeting, you know, we were thinking, well, if we put a parking and spread it out around the edge and made the core of all the athletic venues, including housing and other things, completely pedestrian, we were told, you know, we have a policy on this campus that we need to respect our resacas and the landscape that surrounds us. And so this, you know, this was presented at two, and by five o'clock, we, thankfully to, you know, the use of Photoshop and other things in meetings, you the use of Photoshop and other things in meetings, you can completely invert the plan, so, which is a great idea. It's the notion of building a parking garage in the middle, and then everything kind of spins off of that, and then allevia, opening the risaka up to the landscape. And so, here is a version of the, well, what we're calling the final plan, the conceptual plan, if you will. And rather than staring at it for a while and trying to figure it all out, we thought we'd walk through it in steps, because it starts to make it a little easier to chew on if you chew a little bit at a time. So, in phase one, we're thinking that, obviously, the initial need is for the soccer field to be built. Currently, the access to Los Tomates is right here underneath the freeway. You come in, and the paved area kind of ends about right here. So we need to pave some of that to a parking lot, and then potentially landscape over to the field. And all the rest of this, it's kind of interesting, you see the old grid of the tomato plant locations. And that's pretty much it in phase one. The other piece of this that we thought about in phase one A, or it could fall into two, was an idea of going, there is a road that exists, it's a dirt road, but that could be turned into a hike and bike trail, or it could be a part of the cross-country trail or something. It's about a mile and a half all the way around this thing, that that could be implemented fairly inexpensively. It would have to be cleared out, because it's all pretty tall grass around there. Phase two, and of course, we're reacting to the initial things that really need to be done, is to really relocate all of the athletic fields, including a competition softball field, a practice field, a competition baseball, the tennis courts, a second soccer practice field, and there's some discussion about maybe you build the two of those in phase one. It depends on, you know, kind of where you want to spend your money. So that might fall in phase one. Expand the parking, so that you can actually get to all these events. And then, the road access that maintains itself along the lower edge here. Now, currently, there is no way to get onto the site from the loop road down here. There is water right there. So in the long term, you'll have to build a vehicular bridge, but currently, in this particular plan, you're going across here. And the other idea was to build an administrative office building that may have a gym in it that could be used for volleyball until such time that a bigger facility is built, such as a convocation center of some type. So, the one thing that I've found over the last decade of working with universities is they all have one thing in common, and that's parking issues. But this is our kind of favorite little cartoon, where Peanuts is designing a stadium, and of course, I had to cross out football and put soccer up here, and say, the designer for 60,000 fans, well, I only seat 10. Well, parking's a problem. Well, that's true. And the minute you start doing that, and this is phase two again, in this case, it's the convocation center that we're looking at, which, if one is to build a convocation center, which a lot of universities are starting to do, because they're very flexible space, you can use them for a lot of different things. And those will seat 6,000 to 8,000 folks, but a lot of times, they will also park 15,000 to 100,000 to 2,000 cars. And, you know, we were talking about that, and this is a five-level garage, so if you want to do it in surface parking, you'd multiply that square right there times five across this whole thing. Well, you can't do it in surface parking. So if you're going to get people there to convocation and athletic events to satisfy all this, you're going to need a garage. And then, probably at that point, you're going to need access to this new road across the bridge, which is not a cheap thing to have to build, but probably will need to be done. So just, you know, we did some research on convocation centers, this just happens to be one at Eastern Michigan. I highlighted a couple of things, very versatile seating, anywhere from 7,500 to 9,500 seating arrangements, you can kind of see the floor plan here. But it's also interesting, it says it's ideal for concerts, commencement, family entertainment, conferences, trade shows, athletic events. So it's not all just about the university. It is definitely a public outreach, it could be rented out, it could be a significant moneymaker, I would suspect. And then, the other piece of this is housing. We thought it'd be interesting to start thinking about building student housing out here as a part of the entire master plan. And we have one, two, three, four residence halls here with approximately 1,200 beds. And of course, if those could potentially be modeled where some parts of them have some food venues and other things out here where the students can go down and eat, there could be some classrooms potentially out there. We're not really sure what else is going out there, it could be any number of things. This is a master plan that we did when I was at my former office up in Maryland, Case University up in Cleveland, and it's kind of hard to see, it's a little bleached out, but here's their football stadium here, and we had proposed, all the red boxes were proposed new. We proposed, you can see that curb there as a part of student housing with a garage. Originally, we wanted the garage over here, and they said, well, you know, we don't want to move the existing track and field, it'll cost us too much money. And of course, we, here's a blow-up of it right there. So, we, you know, go away, six months later, they said, you know, we ought to do what they were talking about. And so, they did it, they moved their entire track and field, and they built 1,800 beds, I believe, all around the football stadium. And pow, look at that, big parking garage, right where we had originally proposed it, with a press box. So you park in the garage, and you come out these little stands and sit down, and you get in your car and leave. This Case, originally Case Western Reserve University, and it's kind of a, I don't know, very smart, intelligent students up there, and not very athletically inclined, I think, sometimes, but this has really pulled them together. I shouldn't say that. It's just that the student life function, they really didn't have housing in and around the athletic pieces, and this really did start tying together a lot of their athletic events with the student life. And so, now, there's a lot of students going to games and are very interested in, because it's students right there with the football team and so on and so forth. And they did the same kind of thing at Carnegie Mellon, which also increased their student life at that particular university, too. The final phase is thinking about, okay, well, if we can plan this out in a way that the soccer field can be expanded, may or may not in the future, but if it could be expanded to an international-sized soccer stadium that could seat up to 6,000 spectators, that you might need to add eventually a parking garage. And once again, the idea is that the road infrastructure remains to the south and to the west. This loop that goes around is a jogging trail, more than likely at this point, especially with the student housing, would have to be designed in a way to carry fire truck access, et cetera, to get to these. And you can open the gates and use those for move-in days and other things, and otherwise, it's gated off at these two ends, and then you get into the garage on either side of the convocation center. So that's kind of the conceptual master plan at this point. Should I just keep going, ask questions, keep going? Okay. So, we took the liberty of pulling together a little, and I know a lot of architects are kind of doing this, but we thought it'd be interesting to build a portion of this, I don't want to let this little animation go. But, once again, you can, it'll give you a sense of the size and scale of some of these buildings. Here's the highway, the office building, the future parking garage, the big stadium, the even bigger parking garage behind that, that all this other housing and athletic events spin off of. The softball, we're spinning around to the north, looking south now, the two softball fields, tennis courts are tucked in here. So you can imagine, there could be stands off each edge of this parking garage that look out into each of these events. Even, you could even have the practice field that could have some number of stands on this side that could look out. Here's the competition baseball, the student housing, and then the convocation center, which actually could be a really great welcoming plaza space out in front of this, as one comes in from the main road, and then the jogging trail that goes around, all of that.
Very exciting. It's a corping in the middle of that. Yeah.
Okay. We could do it. Let me stop that and get back to this.
The animations are very helpful, when we're going to be raping money to try and get some of these things done. People sometimes can't see what you envision, but they can see a picture, and these animations are wonderful, so I really appreciate that.
So that was all we could come up with for 80 acres for you. And by the way, let me clarify that the 80 acres is to pretty much the center of the risaka, and so, the actual buildable land is about 69 acres. So of the 80, there's a portion of that that's in the water to the center of the risaka. So, the Village of Fort Brown, most of you have already seen some of this. I tell the story, it's really interesting, I was at my parents' and saw this Texas Highway Magazine, and I flipped it open, and under the caption over here, it kind of tells about the picture, and this is one of your students, by the way, on the cover. And you go to the centerfold, and here's a picture of, guess what? You know, the peninsula. So, as we're looking at this, once again, as we come in to do planning, it's hard for us to sit down and only think about what we're tasked to do. We tend to think outside broadly about how we relate to our neighbors. And what we want to do is start to understand the rest of the campus, and notions of, you know, in the blue is really more the academic core and the sciences and the professional schools and the performing arts, versus the red is more the student life functions, and we're thinking about housing going here, and student support, and the recreation, et cetera. And in the end, it seemed like the peninsula was a good site to do housing. At first, I wasn't too sure of that, but now, thinking about how this really wraps together, if you think about the academics of being the mind and the recreation, now that you're building the rec center as being the body, and the center portion being the spirit and the student spirit part of the campus, it really does seem fairly fitting. And so, as we sort of think about that, with the rec center here, this very early diagram that we talked about as one crosses the bridge over to the peninsula, and the idea of phase one housing goes here, that potentially, there is an idea about what goes here as freshmen and sophomore housing as it relates more to the rec center, and as you move further away from the rec center, but closer to downtown Brownsville, which is over here, that the maturity level goes up, and, you know, the juniors and the seniors start to live here, and maybe this is family apartments, this redesign next to the daycare, and that there's this maturation process that happens from the academic core as one starts to experience life and grow up, that eventually, you go from more apartment living to maybe living above a mixed-use retail housing and more of an urban environment. And so, that kind of attitude really plays out here at Old Dominion, which is a master plan that I worked on a number of years ago. But what's interesting is, here is their college town, this is the main drag that runs through town, and they actually shifted that off, so all the gray boxes are built. You can see some of those that are under construction now. And look at this, that's a convocation center right there, and a big 1,300-car parking garage, or 1,200 cars. So there's a convocation center, parking garage, retail at the lower level, the police department moved in right here, I think, and then student housing. And they had to wait for a year and a half of students that wanted to move into these facilities. So that kind of idea was, we thought about as the extension of the peninsula over to downtown Brownsville that acts here as we move forward, and thinking about Brownsville and the height and scale and massing of some of the streets there, the idea of palm-lined streets, and the heights and architectural character that you see in downtown. And it's not all that different from what Old Dominion did, it's pretty interesting to think about, even some French, you know, porches, et cetera, overhangs, beautiful little details. So there are some great details that can be pulled from downtown Brownsville into this housing project. And so, in the concept plan, this is now open site and the site for phase one of housing, and this is our final rendered plan, and what's shown here is the idea, and what we have over here is phasing. I'm not going to go through all of these phases, but I'd say that phase one housing is looked at right here with a dining facility that connects across to the new bridge, and this reflects where that bridge really does come today. Additional housing, family apartment-style housing with some parking structure, this is the daycare facility. And then, what's shown as purple is this notion of this college town and retail below with housing above. And even a portion of that was thought to be put into this phase one of housing down here as a part of, a part of phase one of housing. And so, here's a rendered version. And what's really, the other story I'll tell was that we ended up building a computer model of this entire site, which then helped us render this particular drawing. We had to come up with the architectural style of all this, so phase one is down here. That's always a little tricky to do. In fact, that's probably the hardest part of doing planning, is actually getting to this phase where you have to start putting architecture to it. This would be along one of the walkways, if the risaka's to your right, and looking into the courtyard, and this loggia right here is thought to be the dining facility, versus on the flip side, on the University Boulevard, you have a series of trees and mixed-use with student housing above, much like that Norfolk project. Of course, that could happen on both sides. And then, here's an aerial from the opposite side. So phase one housing is this piece right in here with the dining, and actually, that dining is sunk in with housing that wraps around it with a significant green that then takes you across the bridge and some tower out here on the end. So that's the end of the presentation, and kind of planning effort for both housing and Los Tomates. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, you see, it was an exciting, an exciting meeting, and you've been very thorough, giving us maybe mirroring, as you said, what, reflecting what we've been asking for, but, you know, giving us lots of new ideas, and it really is very exciting, and we thank you. Your team is doing a great job, and we're excited, and we will, we just take one step at a time here. We wish we had, we wish we had more funding to be able to present all of this quickly.
I have a question. Is the concept of having a split housing and retail level, is that something more for student life, or is it more for auxiliary enterprises that are going to supplement the income of the housing building?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both. It seems to us that what students want today, students are becoming very sophisticated, and I think to have a variety of house types to choose from, so graduate students don't want to necessarily go live in dorm-style residence halls, they want semi-suites, and by the time you do that, a lot of times, you can get developers to come in and build a mixed-use project like that with housing above. And I think the Norfolk project is a great example of students lining up, they couldn't wait to get into that particular housing, especially if they can walk to campus from there. And so, I think providing a variety of type of housing, and of course, the family apartment style housing across the way with the childcare center next door, seems like a win-win for everybody. Parking is going to be one of the bigger issues, though, when it comes to that. And let me say, by the way, I didn't focus on the numbers, but in that total build-out, which was pretty dense, we had about 1,500 beds and 250 apartments. And if you think about the enrollment today of the campus, and if you're at 15,000, I mean, you can do the math real quickly and figure out you're only housing 10% of your students, and a lot of schools out there are, you know, up in the 20% range. So, it's, this is not going to be the silver bullet that's going to address all your housing issues, you're going to have to look beyond the peninsula, I think, to do that, which is another reason why Los Tomates seemed like a great opportunity for you. Thank you, sir, very much.
The committee was unable to discuss the proposals for the district, for construction and management of student housing, so we didn't get into that. If you want to take that over...
Actually, we just wanted to report that we issued requests for proposals for construction, management, and build-out of a 400-bed facility. And there is a committee that has been formed on campus to evaluate the proposals. We received two proposals, and we will be making a recommendation to the physical facility subcommittee, and you're invited to the interviews next week, and we'll bring a report to the Board of Trustees in a subsequent meeting. So, that was the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could just make a couple of comments. We have, this master planning process has been wonderful, and the accolades are reciprocal to the Barodis and Associates and the work they've brought to this. The expertise that our master planner has, as you hear, is bits and pieces from things that he's done all over the country, and it's so valuable for us to be able to understand and to weave into our own work. And so, you need to know how, how much that has helped us in thinking through for us to be able to understand and to weave into our own work. And so you need to know how, how much that has helped us in thinking through this, and how quickly, really, we've been able to do this master planning because of that expertise that was readily available. So I thank you, sir. And the product is extraordinary.
It is.
Complete, detailed. It meets all of the criteria, the campus values that we had asked you to look at. And it allows you to dream, too, of what can be. So it gives us the whole of the picture. And I thank you personally for that amount of work. And it was editing in real time. I mean, just so you know, move this over here, and then we're getting moved. And move it back over here. And the product has been extraordinary. The second thing is that we're going to have to get really creative about funding if we're going to do either of these.
Our middle name.
In a big way.
That's our middle name.
Creative again. But we're really going to have to look at new funding models for some of this work, because we have used up some of the pots that we already have access to. And so in order to make this happen, I think we need to bring more folks in to this work. And I'm not sure exactly what that means yet. But partnering is something we've done very well in the past. And I think this is going to cause us to really stretch on the edges of how far are we willing to go in progressing forward more quickly in some of these projects. So I'm not sure exactly what I'm signaling forward, except to say that we're going to need your help in thinking through some very creative solutions to moving this path forward. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. Good report.
I have number 10, the construction report. Dr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, a construction report is a combination of big dreams and intimate realities and looking forward as well as looking back simultaneously. What we see here in one of the old structures, dear to Dr. Moore's heart, has been removed. This picture, the old kiln, the new kilns are near the Rustaberg Art Building. And the kiln no longer exists. And soon, we're going to be putting sod on the area, extending the passeo out to the area by the commissary. The Rustaberg Gallery and passeo work there continues. I have promises that within the next two weeks, the art gallery itself will be brought to completion. We have the exhibit space, as well as the main gallery, just about completed. The floors will be going in in the next couple of days. This is probably the last view you'll see of this in an incomplete state. The lights are in transport. We'll be here with us soon. We've erected a wall, which will be breaking some of that light and providing as well some visual interest. Upstairs in Rustaberg, one of the classrooms, classroom which is now in use. And we've interrupted several classes going there, looking through it. And we have folks doing lithographs, making prints and so on, also upstairs, second floor in Rustaberg. This is outside Rustaberg on the main passeo side. And this will be now the Rustaberg passeo. You can see it connects to the main area by the set B right there. We'll be putting sod in. The irrigation system's already in. We'll be doing landscaping, putting the sod, little plays of palm trees and so on, making it a lovely secondary passeo. Leitner Center is turning out to be a gem.
Wow.
And I wish we had a picture of this from today, because the thing has been changing every day. We now have some additional flooring put in, which looks absolutely lovely, wood-type floors. You can see the accent walls here. That room now has carpet put in. All of the offices are currently being carpeted. The doors are stained. The hardware will be going on in the next week or so. We're almost done with this, I would say, within the next two to three weeks. This is outside. Now, this is an area where we poured the cement, which will serve as the basis for the pavers. And you can see some of the work the fellows are doing already. And that work was going on throughout the day-to-day. And we're probably about one-third complete putting in the pavers at this time. What is a university without an observatory? Well, we need to ask Dr. Mario Diaz that question. We have an observatory.
Wow.
This is located on the riverside section. Now, that is out by Physical Plant, out by the old Art League Building. And Dr. Diaz will, we assume, be equipping that with instrumentation fairly soon. And as all of us know from our experience at the topping-off ceremony today, work is progressing very, very nicely at the rec center. And I guess all of us, we just can't get enough of pictures of this marvelous facility going up. Looking out toward the soccer field, back toward Physical Plant, a shot from the back. And as it says indeed, work on that facility will continue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I say, Dr. Pearson, you're doing a fabulous job. Your enthusiasm, I cannot say, every time I come, he wants to take and show me what's next, each one of us. And I can't thank you enough, because we need to see what's happening. We need the community to come out and see what's happening on the university. Thank you. And Ms. Mendez is doing a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
We now have Dr. his report to the board.
What am I smiling about?
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Well, we had the topping-off ceremony, as you know, today. It was a significant event because it celebrated the first completed framing of a building resulting from the $68 million bond issued, approved by the voters for Texas Southwest College Taxi District in November 2004. It's a milestone in the bond construction projects at our university. After the long planning process, it's been extremely exciting now to watch the steel beams go up on this first building. Construction crews traditionally celebrate when the final or sometimes the highest structural element of a large construction project is hoisted into place with a topping-off ceremony. Often, the participants in the construction, the crews, the architects, the planners, as well as those that have been using the building, sign their names on the final beam before it is raised and secured in place. The Student Government Association hosted a beam signing event this afternoon from noon to 5:00 at the Student Union veranda for anyone who wished to sign the beam that was going to be used in this topping-off ceremony. And it was signed by very many students, and it was beautifully done. And so I thank you for all of you who were able to attend and be part of that event. Congratulations to us, I guess, because we were named by the Brownsville Herald as the best university by their readers. And so if you're going to get a Reader's Choice Award, it's nice to get it from your own hometown university. So we thank the Brownsville Herald, and we thank all of you who voted that we would be the best university. And that's not an easy vote to get often, and we appreciate that. Department of Education grant, we just received word from last night, as a matter of fact. And that was for $160,000 for a program titled Collaborative Computer Science and Mathematics Ambassador Program for high school students. Through this program, UTB TSC will be training high school students, college professors, and high school teachers on how to utilize scholarship opportunities. The goal is to help high school students become more competitive for scholarships. The new program will be run under the direction of Lamphun Tang, who's an assistant professor in the Computer Science and Computer Information Systems Department. And when I sent him a note last night, congrat, or this morning, congratulating him, he writes me back a very long note saying, "Could not have done it without," and then lists an awful lot of other people that sparked the idea in some ways and helped him understand how to put it together and get it to happen. So I want to thank all of you who were participants in that project. It is, it is his first foray into this work. There will be a gala that will feature traditional Mexican fashion and raise money for students. And it's La China Poblana, La Historia de Una Leyenda. And it'll be at 7:00 PM tomorrow, Thursday, September 27th, at Jacob Brown Auditorium. The audience will be treated to a living history lesson through a fashion show featuring a large collection of china poblanas and Mexican rebosos modeled by women from this community. The china poblanas, along with a few rebosos, will be presented as part of Rojo Lugo's collection, which she has acquired through a lifetime. The new endowment, the proceeds of the event will go to the establishment of a new nursing department scholarship endowment for UTB TSC juniors and seniors, as well as to the following organizations: Family Outreach, Teachers of America, The Quest for Teen Pregnancy, and/or the Gimbeto Foundation. The new endowment will be established by Texas Medical Association Alliance South, Cameron, and Willacy County. So we're very appreciative of being included in that effort. Dr. Jorge Castañeda, who was the former Mexican Foreign Minister and now Political Science and Latin American Studies Professor at NYU, New York University, will explore U.S.-Mexico relations this fall as a headliner for our distinguished lecture series. Castañeda will speak on October the 10th, so please make sure that you've got it on your calendar and save the moment. In 2000, he was, it was appointed by President Vicente Fox as his Foreign Minister. During his tenure, he focused on diverse issues in U.S.-Mexican relations, including migration, trade, security, and narcotics control, joint diplomatic initiatives on the part of Latin American nations, and the promotion of Mexican economic and trade relations globally. In 1997, Castañeda has been the Global Distinguished Professor of Political Science and Latin American Studies at NYU. He also taught at Princeton and at Berkeley. We will be giving you more information about him as the event gets closer to us. But I just wanted to make sure that it was on your calendar and that you were aware of it now. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, I have an announcement. And that is, this Friday, UT Austin will hold their distinguished alumnus awards ceremony. This is the highest alumni award that the university bestows. It was created in 1958 by the Texas X's and recognizes annually up to six alumni of the University of Texas at Austin. Recipients are chosen by a special Texas X's committee from nominations submitted by alumni and other members of the university community. I am pleased to announce
Roll one.
That our very own, Dr. Garcia, was chosen as one of this year's nominees. And we all know that we have a great leader in Dr. Garcia. And we're very proud that she's being recognized by her peers across the state. So we offer
The world.
The world. Congratulations, Dr. Garcia. And it gets better. She gets to be recognized at the UT football game at halftime, right?
Ah.
So
Get on the field.
Tune in on TV.
And they promised that somebody was going to pronounce my father's name correctly, which is Biabria. And so be listening, because I certainly am. The Garcia part, I'm not worried about. The, what I'm mostly concerned about is my father's name, because he was...
I think it's a great honor, Dr. Garcia. Any other announcement?
I have one.
Are you in there?
I'm in.
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, let me get back before...
No.
Thank you. Proposed meeting dates, Thursday, October 25, November 29, and December 20 for the board and party advisory committee, Thursday, December 6.